All right, call the meeting to order. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. At this time, I'd like to call the August 13th Planning Board meeting to order. May I ask everyone to stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do any of the members have any conflicts of interest with respect to any of the items on the agenda tonight?
I don't.
I do as to the PB 19-13.
Okay. Well, I believe we have six people for the second item and five for the first, with Mr. Owens setting out on the five lot subdivision. That gives us a quorum for the meeting, so we're good. Are there any changes to the agenda tonight?
No, sir.
Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda as presented.
I'll make the motion.
All right. We have a motion and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda passes. Agenda approved. Are there any changes to the July 9th meeting minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the minutes as presented.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Mr. Dahl has a motion.
I'll second that motion.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the minutes from the July 9th meeting are approved. There any items of old business? I believe we have the PB 19-13 Currituck County Tax Amendment. Would you like me to read the whole thing?
If you don't mind.
Sure. It is the Tax Amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 2, Administration, Chapter 6, Subdivision and Infrastructure Approvements, and Chapter 10, Definitions and Measurements to Limit Minor Subdivisions to Those Without Significant Infrastructure Approvements, i.e., Road Installed to NCDOT Standards, Fire, Hydrant, Fire Pond. It will also limit minor subdivisions from stripping out along existing NCDOT-maintained roads. This tax amendment does not apply to family subdivisions, a type of minor subdivision.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know that was a lot to read. Just to remind the board, this is a text amendment directed by the Board of Commissioners that you heard last month and asked for additional time to consider it, so it was tabled. Based on the input that I have received from the board since the last meeting was to prohibit minor subdivisions from being stripped out along all NCDOT roads, and that was the main point of discussion at the last meeting. I did add some definitions from DOT's manual that we did not have to clarify things and make us a little more compatible with their language. I was, one of the properties that we looked at last time and that y'all asked about, this is a subdivision that Mr. Miller had developed, and he said he was getting ready to purchase this to develop it as well. And I was asked how many lots could be stripped out along those two roads. So that's basic, not that this would ever come to fruition, but this is what could. This is showing the minimum lot width of 125 feet, so you're looking at a total of 24 lots that could be stripped out along the two roads that are DOT roads that are remaining. One of the, we want to make a clarification too, if I can have a Part B of the conversation. This is staff requesting in addition to the text amendment, just to clarify that you cannot have more than one private access street, and those are those gravel roads. They're intended for family subdivisions and for subdivisions of two lots. It's easy for me to say how I interpret it, but if there's some misunderstanding, I'd rather go ahead and clarify that, to say no more than one private access street per parent parcel. And that is, this is a very poor rendition of that same piece of property that was requested instead of putting in one road to DOT standards, like was done over here at Unsound Woods, to put in two of those gravel roads on the same piece of property. So we want to make it clear that that's not what the ordinance is after. This one, I have not had an opportunity to review yet, and I apologize. It's the same property, but reorienting this to try to put in that private access road instead of installing a road. The last meeting, we talked about average annual daily traffic counts. I believe I emailed this to the board, but this is just a summary of that that was emailed to you. For example, one of the roads that we had a lot of discussion on was East Ridge Road, and the, according to DOT, the average annual daily traffic count in 2017 was 510 trips per day. This is another piece of property that we've talked about. This has since been redesigned, but this is in idlet, and it's along four existing roads. It's probably the only property you'll see like that in the county, and there are 17 lots that are stripped out along those four different roads. So we got this right after someone had asked about it. Just to remind you, this is some of the minor subdivision lots that were stripped out that we had talked about on Baxter Lane, Pointer's Road, Tolls Creek Road, this is the one on East Ridge Road. And there are really no changes since our last meeting, other than the addition of those definitions and the clarification of only one private access street per parent parcel. Staff is recommending approval of the request because it's consistent with the 2006 land use plan, and the policies are spelled out in your packet, and the request is reasonable and in the public interest because a higher level of review is required for subdivisions installing significant infrastructure, particularly NCDOT roads, and most have to be reviewed by our technical review committee and not administratively by the planning director alone. Two, limiting driveway cuts along existing roads preserves traffic function and minimizes traffic accidents. And three, to have a higher quality development, it's important to mandate internal streets at more than two lots. So I will be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for staff?
We can, we can make a suggestion, correct?
Absolutely. The board would have to vote on it as a majority, but absolutely.
I personally believe that it's a very broad stroke labeling every road NCDOT standard. I really like the idea of the traffic count, and I think the AADT, Annual Daily Traffic Count, would be something that if we could incorporate the language, I would like to see that because a subdivision that, all, you know, all the subdivisions are NCDOT, most...
Are they, are all subdivisions required NCDOT?
No.
Family subdivisions will not be required, and two lots or less would not be required to do that.
Some are private with a high marriage association as well.
Exactly. Some choose to do private streets that they do not want NCDOT to take over.
Okay, so it still seems like a broad stroke to me.
It does.
And, I mean, I believe the safety issue, especially with the high traffic count, I would like to see that stripping stopped. However, in a subdivision like mine where there's hardly any traffic at all, you kind of put the landowner, you know, you kind of tie up the, you know, the property owner. Is there a way to add the language to AADT Daily Traffic Count Standard?
You could add the Daily Traffic Count Standard to possibly maybe a subdivision road definition where it would be a side road off of a side road. I think in however what we approve or do tonight, we do need to label certain roads, such as Tolls Creek, Poplar Branch, to not be able to be stripped out on, and then possibly use the traffic count on other roads other than those.
The reason why I think the traffic count's important, because as the subdivision occurs, that threshold comes up. That means if that traffic count comes up, that means they can't do it anymore.
Correct.
Something, just thinking out loud, something you may want to, if you're leaning towards an average daily traffic count, you could pick a number, say, I think the one we were concerned about on East Ridge Road was like 500 trips per day. If it's that or above, I'm just throwing out a number just because it came to my mind. And if DOT doesn't have a traffic count, they would have to petition DOT to do that, or they could hire their own private transportation professional to provide that number if they didn't want to wait on DOT. Just a thought.
We would need to form that into a motion somehow to...
Well, make a suggestion to amend, instead of the road at NCDOT, to amend to a traffic count, leave the hydrant and the fire ponds.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
I haven't thought about the legal terms of how to do it. I just think that they, you know, it's a broad stroke, so I'm not sure how to, to the legal term of how I would suggest to amend it, but instead of road to NCDOT, DOT, but to a traffic count.
Of, we'd need a number.
Can you show us that count again?
Mr. Chairman, the audience has asked that we speak into our microphones.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you.
How are you going to pick?
I mean, I guess you would, that's...
You have to take every road.
What Tammy is asking is to say, yeah.
Yeah. There's a number. You're looking for a threshold number.
Anything greater than 500 traffic count is not allowed to strip out anymore.
Did you have a question?
If I could offer you some guidance on this if you'd like, or a suggestion.
Possibly in just a minute. What are some of the roads that staff would definitely not want to see?
That's going to be a decision from the board. I mean, staff is recommending all DOT roads.
Gotcha.
I'm confused. If it's a dead end road right now and they put, I don't know, 50 lots on it, isn't, I mean, you do a traffic count, it's going to show, well, there's no traffic on it right now, but by the time they build it out, it's going to be right where we don't want it.
Right. We can calculate the traffic count per lots in the subdivision, so we can say, we're proposing this many lots, the average daily traffic count is estimated to be this many trips per day.
So you can do that.
Lori has a nice calculator.
There is a trip, what they call a trip generator, that's put together by traffic engineer professionals, and it gives you a good estimate of the number of daily trips. Single-family homes would make, all types of businesses, all types of multifamily development and things like that, that we can use to make a very good estimate on the number of trips per day.
Okay. I guess my thing is I, you know, just picking a number, it doesn't seem like a study to me, you know what I mean? But if I were to pick a number, I guess I would go with the 500. I mean, we want to see the safety portion. That is the reason, if I'm understanding, the reason for this is because of the safety on all the roads and all the driveways that are coming out of the high-traffic, really highway, coming onto the highway roads.
That's certainly the most important component, and the other component is the quality development that you're going to get as well.
Okay.
Instead of stripping lots out along existing streets, if you put in an internal street and bring your lots off of that, that's generally considered a higher quality development.
I guess what I'm trying to understand is some subdivisions that are DOT roads don't, it may not have a lot of homes there, so you're taking that completely away from the landowner. I guess that's what my concern is. I'm just concerned that we're overreaching.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
I just think that the, when they're using the broad NCDOT standard, there are, I mean, I'm just looking at my neighborhood, for instance. My neighborhood is an NCDOT neighborhood, DOT road in my neighborhood, although we're not connected to an NCDOT road, but our, my neighborhood is.
You're on a private, right.
I am on a private.
Okay, on the 10-acre exemps.
Right.
Okay.
But I'm still saying that if the developer had property at the end of that subdivision, he wouldn't be allowed to subdivide it, he wouldn't be allowed to do any more with it. It'd be done. Is that, am I understanding that, or...
You'd have to file for a major subdivision.
Major subdivision.
Wouldn't it be better for the county, for appearances and safety, if...
But if it's back in the back of...
Fire EMS access is also a component.
It is.
Sure. I mean, in my opinion, it would be perhaps easier for a fire truck to access on a paved road than a gravel road. I know gravel roads can be engineered to hold fire trucks, but keep that in mind as well.
All right. Well, you can make a motion to go for it.
Anyone else? Well, I'm going to back up just a little bit because I may have skipped something. Does anyone wish to speak on this item tonight? Mr. Miller, I know you got your hand up. Come on up.
My name is Sam Miller. My business address is 111 Currituck Commercial Drive, Suite D, Moayak, North Carolina, 27958. I spoke about this at the last meeting, and I think we're going down the right path with some of the things that we have relative to safety, and I agree with that, you know, that some of Ms. Kraus and some other of you have echoed as well. Tolls Creek Road, Guinea Road, Putten Ridge Road, yeah, there's some significant concerns. You're also dealing with a road that's a DOT road that has a much higher maximum rate of speed travel, 45, 55 mile an hour. You have to consider some of that stuff, too, and NCDOT does classify roads as primary, secondary. They also have speed limits and other things like that. Some of the examples we looked at tonight, specifically relative to one of the properties that I own, if you wouldn't mind, scrolling back. Further, please. There. Yeah. Both of those two roads are secondary roadways. They were developed as subdivision roadways. The southern road, which are around all the brown, is Sanderson Court. Off of that comes a cul-de-sac that you see immediately that comes off, that's Sutrick Court. In a subdivision, what's the posted speed limit in a subdivision? It's 25 miles per hour. Now, if we were to develop all this parcel at one time, as Ms. Glave has shown lots 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, it'd be no problem putting those lots in, and we did as a major subdivision. But we've done all this as a major subdivision from start to end. That was a complete shell-stemper road. So for the life of me, I can't understand why in the world we would want it if we do that, and we are going to purchase that property, and we're going to do a small, minor subdivision, actually, over there. I intend to build a primary personal residence on that property, and then I'm going to develop about five lots out of it, recombine one of those, and sell that. Something similar to this crude sketch, we have something a little bit more professional, but Ms. Glave was actually out the other day, so we weren't able to get that. We met with Jason today, so I don't know that all the paperwork's caught up throughout the process of what we're displaying tonight. But nonetheless, that's primarily what we had intended to do it. So there, if you see the two lots, as you come on at Sanderson Court, now Sutrick Court is not shown in this diagram, it's cut off, but that is the same road. So we intended to add two lots there, as you see, the first two, and then at the end, it's water. So everyone, it'd be nice to have a house in the water, and I'm sure there's lots of people who'd like to have it, myself included. So in doing so, we're going to cut it into about four pieces and do those pieces. We've read through the instructions, we've read through the rules, and we found a way that we can do this by maintaining the one street and still provide the access. The average daily traffic count, according to the traffic manual, Edition Number 7, which has been the benchmark and the standard that's used throughout the county as well as others, is approximately 10 trips per day per household. I personally don't do 10 trips per day per household, so I think it's very conservative, but nonetheless, that's what's used. If you go to Edition 10, they've stepped it down, I think it's down around nine now because you have a lot less, you have a lot more people homeschooling and things like that. But anyway, at 10 trips per day, you've got currently 24 lots on that, that'd be 25, 26, 27, 28, 29. So just on that small street, the average daily traffic count, according to those standards, will put you nearly at 300. So as far as a suggestion relative to traffic count and numbers, Laurel Woods Estates is another subdivision. That's a subdivision street, there's 25 mile an hour speed limit in there. It's not posted, it is an NCDOT roadway 100% throughout that entire community. That community has the same width of these streets, has the same width of any other subdivision done by any other developer typically, 20-foot width. It has right-of-way that extends beyond that, of course, but the actual driving path is 20 feet in width. With those kind of things, there's 160 homes in Laurel Woods Estates. So if you use the same judgment call and say, well, it's 10 trips per day per household, well, that's 1,600 trips out of Laurel Woods Estates, which means that really we shouldn't put that many houses in there because that's not appropriate. My point is, it's not so much about just an NCDOT street, and you're on the right path with that, because there are instances where it does make sense to add some additional lots and do some things and do it intelligently, and it should be something that someone like Lori, who's a very intelligent woman, I've worked with her quite a bit as a planning director, should be able to make that judgment call on some of those small things, because you may want to put additional lot or two, and there may be a good reason for it, but if we just say, no, you can't do it, then there's, you can't do it ever, under any circumstances. And there may be circumstances where Ms. LaCicero may need to review that or may be able to make that call, rather than going Planning Board, Commissioners, et cetera. It's a long process. It takes a lot out of the people that are going to do it, it causes a lot of expense for the people doing it, and it just sometimes isn't necessary to add more laborious pieces to it. I do understand the pieces of safety, and in some of those cases on the other roads, Tolls Creek Road, that's not a subdivision road, that's a conveyance road, that's a primary thoroughfare road. 168, another specific example. But as a developer, when you build a roadway in a subdivision, just because you make it NCDOT-ready and NCDOT-standards, doesn't mean that you shouldn't ever be able to put another lot along it. That just doesn't make any sense. All we're doing is basically raising the taxes of every taxpayer in the state of North Carolina, because once those roads become NCDOT roads, now they're owned by the state. So the state maintains it. So does anybody live in the state of North Carolina? Yeah, and everybody in this room does as well. And in doing so, you pay taxes to the state, and you pay it when you buy your gasoline, you pay it for your vehicles and other things, and those things translate into dollars that maintain your roads. So why would we just want to put another road in and make another NCDOT road when, in like this example, we could put some more lots on an existing road and be more efficient with the design we already have? It just doesn't make any sense. So my issue isn't with that we make some changes to it, and I think there's roads that we definitely need to make changes to it, because backing out on Tolls Creek roads is just not a good idea. I've got kids that are going to start driving, and I certainly wouldn't want my daughters backing out of my driveway on Tolls Creek Road and getting in an accident or somebody getting hurt. It's not my intent, but I'm an engineer, and I look for efficiency, and it just doesn't make sense to me to just blanket statement. So I think, Ms. Kraus, I think you're on the right track. If others of you share that same opinion, I think you should continue to push that piece and look at it, because there are some cases, like developed subdivision streets, where it may make sense to allow stripping out, if you want to call it in a negative connotation, it doesn't change the look, form, or feel of that subdivision, it can work in compliance with the stormwater process that goes on there, we've got fire hydrants and water system already in place, so now we want to add another road, we'll run more water line, put another fire hydrant in. Eventually, you have to add more people to maintain that stuff as a county as well, and we all pay for it as residents. So when we make this decision, you know, I'm all for the safety side of it, and there's places to do that, it makes total sense. But there's other places where we're just going to add cost, and we're really not going to add safety. Putting five, six, 10 more houses on Sanderson Court Street, that, you know, isn't going to make that street any more or any less safe.
Or is it aesthetics as well? I mean, does...
You can still develop it in the same accordance with that. I mean, why would we just, we're not going to just come in and cut those lots in and just willy-nilly throw the thing together. You've still got ditches that you're coming across, and you've got culvert pipes that have to go in, they have to go to certain elevations to maintain stormwater compliance. You know, you have to have certifications done by survey companies or engineers to do that kind of stuff. So there's a lot more to this story than that case. You know, I think in some cases, it makes total sense, you know, and probably 50% of what we're presenting, I agree with. But the other half, when it comes to secondary subdivision streets or dead-end streets, I think Mr. Dahl, I think you had mentioned something about that, in those cases, yeah, you can't put 500 back there or something like that, but you can put something at some point. And if you got the street and you got the frontage, what's the issue if it's not a high-traffic area? I don't understand it, because if we build a subdivision street and we maintain the same speed limit, and we can put a driveway on that, what's the difference? You know, there's also some limitations that you do create as well, and you can look at it from the developer's standpoint and say, well, you know, I don't really care. But we also are a rural community, too, and we do have farmers and other people like that as well. And in the past, this has been used in hard times for people to leverage and get some money as well, rather than selling something off or things like that if you had a significant failure of equipment or other things, you might be able to subdivide something if it's a safe location. I'm not saying sacrifice safety for somebody's financial well-being, but, you know, someone who owns some land, that was a farmer, missing a couple lots along a road that isn't heavily trafficked, that has a lower speed limit and has a low traffic count, if it's not going to jeopardize any safety of those things, and it's going to give some families some money so they can go buy a piece of machinery or continue farming or process on through a hard time, why are we going to restrict that? Those are the two things that concern me, the subdivision streets and the issues where we have low traffic counts and we have somebody that really could benefit from doing something with their land. And that's really my main concern. So I think if we look at those pieces, that's where I have the heartburn about it, the pieces of Tolls Creek, the pieces of Guinea Road, you know, even on Baxter Road, Putten Ridge Road, East Ridge Road, thoroughfare roads, Old Swamp Road, you know, all those kind of things have a lot of thoroughfare, and we're at much higher rates of speed. Makes a lot of sense there to do exactly what planning is suggesting, but some of these other streets, we're really just going to add cost and infrastructure, which is going to result in more cost. which is going to result in more cost. So my suggestion, if you were going to pick a number, it's probably more like 1,000 or 1,500, to be realistic, if you compare it to a subdivision piece. But you may want to also consider putting some classification on it. It has to be a secondary roadway, not on a primary roadway, such as Talls Creek, Puddin Ridge, other things. The things that you said, Mr. Balance, about that specifically calling some streets out or roads is what they really should be described as, because that's what they really are, then that's where I think we've got the issue. And if we're not careful with it, all we're going to do is call it, "We're doing this for safety," but really just going to increase cost in what we're doing as well.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Miller?
Last comment I'll make is, well, whatever changes you do suggest, I do strongly encourage, because some of us have spent money, myself included, I've spent significant money trying to prepare something for my family and my household in that area. So I would ask that if you do something like this or make a suggestion of any sort, whether it be in accordance with the suggestions I've already made or completely different from that, and I respect that and your opinion and your position. You've got the right, you've had the nomination to do so, and, you know, six minds are much better than one. But what I do ask you to do is give us a little bit of time in that as well. Allow a period of 90 days or something like that, so if somebody had something in process, they could get it done. We're not going to fully develop the county in 90 days, but somebody who is legitimately working on it like myself could at least get their work done without losing the investment they've already made. So if you'd give me that courtesy, that'd be the one request that I'd ask you to honor. If you have any questions, I'm here, I'll be glad to discuss it at a technical level or otherwise, it is somewhat of my background.
Anyone else have any questions?
So...
Thank you.
Naming, breaking it down by roads, there's certain roads, and I'm new to this whole thing. Is that something that we can do, roads? Break them down?
Traffic count.
Traffic count.
We can...
Naming the roads.
We could suggest that, yes.
Well, that's...
We could suggest that it be...
That's just a suggestion I do make.
Anything that you wanted, really, but I mean, we could go with, he mentioned a 25 mile an hour speed limit, you could say any roads with a 25 mile an hour or less.
Secondary roads. I still like the idea of a traffic count.
You could add a traffic count to that.
Add a traffic count. Basically, no thoroughfare roads, no major roads. And I guess that's where we need, we kind of need a little bit of direction on the roads.
I doubt there's any...
That's where I struggle, too. Because think about Talls Creek Road, DOT does not classify that as a major arterial street.
But there's no parts of it that have a 25 mile an hour speed limit. So if we said 25 miles an hour, yeah, they still consider it a side road.
Thank you.
But if you said something along the lines of 25 miles an hour or less...
And traffic count. I believe that the traffic count is where we would...
There would not be a major range with a...
The safety issue would be addressed.
25 mile an hour speed limit or a...
Or less.
Or less. Traffic count below that, yeah. Just a suggestion.
I would, where is that text amendment, the wording that you wanted to have it?
What page is that on? It's text amendment 11.
She's looking for your consistency statements. There you go. She's got it on the board. Yeah, it's on 11.
Page 11.
Page 11.
I'm sorry, Cherie gave me a packet and I left it on my desk.
It's page 11, and that's the consistency.
And it's also on your screen.
So Ms. Kraus, keep the traffic count at 500 trips per day, as you mentioned, or...
What do you think about that? What are your thoughts?
This, East Ridge is around 500, that's, that would seem to be, that's pretty busy.
I think that's the number they're looking for.
What's the speed limit at East Ridge Road?
I'm not sure.
I believe 45 miles an hour.
I think it's 45.
I think it's 45, in most places.
Yeah.
Because the speed limit is definitely something that could...
Would outdo that. Or eliminate that.
I'm making suggestions, I'm not here to rewrite the code here. I'm, you know, I'm going with...
We're making suggestions for the Commissioners to do that.
Together. That's right.
So, does anyone else have any, anyone else from the crowd want to speak on this subject? Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, sir. My name is Mark Clark, I live at 123 Trevor Way in Moayak.
Thank you, sir.
First off, I could ask you, please, to stay closer to your microphones.
Sure.
I'm extremely hard of hearing.
Yes, sir.
So when you sit back, and I have a great deal of difficulty. Two points I wanted to make, and one, I couldn't hear your conversation on the tertiary-type roads in the development. My understanding, I live in Launch Landing, we have private roads, we've been in the process for five years to get them turned over to the state. And over the years, we've had speeding issues, we've been in contact with Dare County sheriffs, or excuse me, Currituck sheriffs, and we're informed, we cannot put 25 mile an hour speed limit signs up, and the state and the county can only enforce it to a minimum or a maximum of 35. That's the speed limit, because it's an unmarked private road. We can't lower it ourselves. The state won't allow it, even though it's a private road. So I caught something, I'm not sure, you can make a main road in a development 35 and then make the other roads private and keep like a 25 mile an hour speed limit on all of them. That may be something you want to check into with the state and the sheriff's office, okay? We could have been told all wrong, they offered to set up radar, but they couldn't do anything for people doing, say, 32 miles an hour and a 25, because it can't be 25. So again, my expertise was not in law enforcement or state ordinances, so something to check on before you go that route. So my second question was kind of asked and answered in reference to the approval of the 19-13, so...
We can call you back up when that one comes up, if you want.
Okay. Like I said, I didn't catch all of that conversation, but in with the traffic count, I kept hearing 35 to 25, and it may be a legal issue to not doing that.
Right.
And the secondary issue with that comes up is, who's going to maintain those roads? The state won't. You've got a private, you've got a little private court off of a main state road, those residents are responsible to maintain that road.
A lot of times, the residents know that when they're purchasing their properties.
A lot of times. Should be 100% of the time. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
All right, does anyone else? Mr. Bussell?
I wasn't actually planning to speak tonight, but I think you're on the right track, and I just wanted to chime in on my two cents worth. I think that the, when you're talking about the speed limit and the traffic counts as the criteria you're proposing to use to determine where this can be done, I think that's correct. I think that there are situations where it should be maybe either or rather than meeting both of those criteria. For example, a 25 mile an hour road and a 500 traffic count would cut out the example that I brought to show you last month that has a traffic count that is prob, I don't, I looked at the DOT map and it's not listed, and I would be surprised if it was over 100, but it has a higher speed limit because there isn't any traffic. So I think maybe you could say something, either a 25 mile an hour traffic or below 500, something along those lines would allow some, that meet one of the conditions but not the other condition, but were still appropriate to do a minor subdivision. Thanks.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? All right. Does anyone else have any questions up here? The staff or each other? All right, hearing none, I'll open the floor for a motion.
A motion to amend the wording that the staff recommends to 25 miles per hour and/or, either/or, 500 traffic count, 500 car traffic count.
Okay. So you're saying, as presented with that one exception for the stripping out the lots for a 25 mile an hour and/or 500 traffic count?
Correct, yes. Now, I let stand the fire hydrant ponds.
Everything else, as staff has it written?
Yeah. I would just change the DOT.
If I may just ask for clarification, and/or are very important here.
It is.
So is it going to be and, or? I need to know which way to record that.
Or.
All right, we have a motion? All right, is that good?
I got it.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
You made the motion.
Oh.
I'll second it. We have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes 5 to 1, 4 to 1. Sorry.
What I will do, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, what I will do is clean it up, send it out to you just to get some quick feedback before we put it on the Commissioner's agenda.
Okay.
I think I've captured what we've talked about, but I would just like for you to review that, please.
Sounds perfect. Everybody okay with that? All right.
Thank you all, that was a tough one.
We're moving on to new business. Mr. Ellings, you're back on now.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next item is P D 1917 Baxter Station, planned development residential zoning to support 127-unit subdivision, 103 single-family units, and 24 duplex units, with a density of 2.37 units per acre and minimum lot size of approximately 10,000 square feet with the construction of an on-site wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Right.
I will take you through this request, just to orient the board. Baxter Lane is directly across from the bank of Currituck in Moayak, the cemetery's just north of there. Going to show you the zoning and the zoning of surrounding properties. The property is currently zoned agricultural, and the request is to rezone to planned development residential. The property to the north is low-density residential lots along Baxter Lane. The adjoining subdivision to the east is Baxter Lane Estates, that's zone conditional single-family mainland. The property to the south is Hidden Oaks, that is also zoned the conditional single-family mainland. And then to the west, there is a vacant piece of commercial property. And in your staff report, I included this chart that showed the density of adjoining subdivisions for Hidden Oaks and Baxter Lane Estates and the average lot size for there. The 2006 Land Use Plan classifies this property as rural, so the request will require a map amendment with the Land Use Plan, the Camel Land Use Plan, to change this to full service. And the Moayak Small Area Plan classifies it as full service already. In your packet, especially the digital copy of the printouts, you may have seen more than one option, but with the planned developments, your master plan, you have one master plan that doesn't have, we'll call it options for lack of a better word, but the one we're looking at tonight is the one that has the on-site wastewater treatment plant, and that is the area right along those railroad tracks there. They're requesting a density of 2.37 units per acre. Just as a note, the adjoining Hidden Oaks, it's 26% more dense than Hidden Oaks, but the lot sizes are very comparable. It's 118% more dense than the Baxter Lane Estates that's adjoining to the east with lot sizes about 126% smaller than those. Something that we also need to talk about tonight is our adequate public facilities, and I'm probably going to get Lori to ring in here because there was some new information that was given to us after 5 o'clock today. But what you see in your packet, when we talk about adequate public facilities, it's the county facilities, that we have those adequate infrastructure in place, and that does include schools to support a development. Until tonight, or I should say, last night, the Board of Education grouped elementary schools, so we'll call, I call it this, they don't, the northern parts. They grouped Moayak Elementary, Charbrooke Elementary, and Central Elementary together, and together, at actual capacity, they were at 92%, committed capacity, 118% with this proposal adding 32 lots. Couple of things. Actual capacity is how much actual capacity that school will hold. That's a number that we get from the school system. Committed capacity is that number in which the houses haven't been built yet, but the lots have been approved. So those elementary schools were at 118%. An emergency called school board meeting, it was decided last night not to redistrict schools, so now we'll be pulling out Moayak Elementary separately. Before, you could, you could kind of redistrict and perhaps move some Moayak to Charbrooke, maybe some Charbrooke to Central, but with the vote last night, that's no longer the case. So Moayak by itself is at 100% capacity now. I do not have a committed capacity because, as I said, we were finding this out as we were walking into the meeting room with y'all for our pre-meeting. Moayak Middle School and Currituck Middle School, their actual capacity is at 82% with committed capacity at 96%. This would add 10 middle school students. Our high schools, that includes Currituck High and J.P. Knapp Early College, they're at an actual capacity of 84% with a committed capacity of 104%. This development would add 18 lots. A couple of things, we'll get this updated now that we have new information and have a better chart for you next time. And the other thing, these numbers do not include the minor subdivisions that we've been talking about, the exempt subdivisions, the 10-acre larger lots you hear us talk about. And they don't, they don't get captured in these numbers because they don't require a use permit that triggers the applicability of the adequate public facilities. Lori, is there anything you wanted to add? She was in the meeting.
I was not in the school board meeting, but I was in a conversation with the county attorney and the county manager going over what did happen in the school board meeting last night. Like Timmy said, when we're monitoring the school numbers and making... when we're monitoring the school numbers and making sure that the development that we're seeing, that we have the schools and the other county facilities in order to serve this development, we monitor that through this adequate public facilities ordinance. And typically, we, in the past, we have grouped those three elementary schools in the northern mainland together. And with the hope, although we understand it's not politically palatable, but the reality may be that there at some point may be a need to redistrict and you could, like Tammy was saying, shift the lines of where the kids go. Last night at the emergency meeting, the school board voted not to redistrict at this time. So the Moayak Elementary School is at capacity. With their enrollment, as of Friday, they are at 583 students. And that is the capacity that they have given us, that is their capacity for teaching, for using that building, for instructing the students. So that kind of leaves us in this transition area. We don't have a, essentially, we don't know how that's going to impact the committed capacity for all these other subdivisions, all these lots that have not been built out yet. And this is, you're up to date with those numbers as much as we are. We haven't had time to run the numbers. There are several things, I think, that are going on. We have a very popular housing market in Moayak. And as I spoke to you all in the work session, we have seen an uptick in how fast these houses are coming online, how fast we're issuing certificates of occupancy, the houses are being finished, and that people are moving in. For example, in 2016, we issued 254 certificates of occupancy. In 2017, we issued 397 certificates of occupancy for single-family, U single-family homes. And in 2018, we issued 422. So you see that steady uptick. You know, we were doing this and all of a sudden, we're getting a lot more homes come online. As of today, we have already issued 179 certificates of occupancy or certificates of completion, compliance? C O C, sorry, the terminology was changed. 179 for areas north of the Coinjock Canal. That grouping of the northern mainland that we call, that we, the grouping of those three elementary schools, 32 in the lower, in the lower Currituck. So already, we're on pace to, let's see, issue over nearly 300 certificates of occupancy. Am I doing my math right? Talking about the number of weeks and how many, we're typically issuing 4.5 COs a week in the northern mainland. So we're on pace to keep adding houses at a rate that we haven't seen before. So I think that's one of the reasons that we're having we're having issues with the capacity at the school on a much quicker rate than we've seen in the past.
Thank you. Okay. So there are several options for developing the property, and that's something that the board is asked to see, are there other options? So I'm just going to point out three. One is to develop the subdivision as is without rezoning in the agricultural zoning district. That would yield about 23 units. Option two, rezone to the conditional single-family mainland, like a couple of the adjoining developments. And that would have a density of about one unit per acre or 53 units. And then the option that is the applicant's request is the P D R rezoning that would yield approximately 160 units. They're asking for 127. And that 160 yield is probably far-reaching for the property. Just to go over some of the sample elevations that the applicant proposed. Tell me if you want me to slow down. I think there are four or five of them here. And so what happens with the planned development? The applicant, the developer proposes terms and conditions that they want to place on the development. And I'm just going to, I've summarized them and I'll run through them briefly. The use of the property would be a planned development residential subdivisions. They're aware that there need to be improvements made to Baxter Lane ditch which runs down Baxter Lane itself, and they are willing to make improvements to that. They're offering to develop in a minimum of two phases with the onsite wastewater treatment plant. The terms and conditions, as well as that master plan, would be part of the approval. The housing styles would conform with those models that you just looked at. As far as transportation, they are providing three connections to Baxter Lane. The main entrance does include a deceleration lane, and they are providing interconnectivity to Hidden Oaks to the south. And they're proposing curb and gutter to N C D O T standards along with sidewalks. Potable water will be supplied through Currituck County with an eight-inch main. They're proposing to loop the site through and connect to Hidden Oaks. And they are providing adequate proof that there's adequate flow and pressure for fighting fires. The wastewater conditions, again, were the onsite wastewater treatment plant. And just a note, if off-site becomes available, whether it be a private system or the county system, and they want to then convert to that, it would require an amended plan. Stormwater management, again, they're offering to improve that major drainage ditch that runs down Baxter Lane and convey on-site stormwater through retention ponds that will handle 100-year storm event, which is more than, that's required. And also provide curbs with inlet stormwater pipes and open vegetated swales. They're proposing environmental protection and monitoring through the installation and management of that stormwater system as well as landscaping throughout the development. And there will be an association formed, a property owners association formed, that will then be responsible for maintaining that ditch and the facilities there. I'm not going to read this to you. I hope you can see it, it's kind of small, but it's also in your packet. And it's, there are proposed standards for setbacks and minimum lot sizes for the single-family dwelling lots as well as the duplex lots. Let's talk about some of the county plans. Again, the Kama Land Use Plan, 2006 Land Use Plan classifies as rural. And the request must go through a land use plan map amendment to full service. It's staff's opinion that the development is incompatible with that Kama Land Use Plan. And one of the policies noted in your packet, I'll just summarize, that the county shall encourage development to occur at densities appropriate for the location. The Moayak Small Area Plan does classify this as full service. It's staff's opinion that this development is incompatible with the Moayak Small Area Plan. And the entire policies are in your packet, but F L U 1 and H N 1. And both of those speak to compatibility between developments and existing development and densities appropriate for the location.
Ms. Glave, give me a second. For the 2006 Land Use Plan, if the Board of Commissioners, if you all recommend approval of this project and the Board of Commissioners, if they approve the project through that legislative act of the rezoning, that will automatic, that can automatically update the Kama Land Use Plans. When Ms. Glave was speaking about updating that, there has to be a specific language in the motion to update that. But that can be something with the new state legislation that can happen with a legislative act, i.e. a rezoning or something like that. So you could, that could be automatically updated with that rezoning act. So just a little clarification.
But it would need to be made part of the motion?
It would need to be made part of the motion. That conditions have changed from the time of the land use plan that this now can support, this area would support that type of development. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
One of the criteria in the U D O, I'm sure you've heard us talk about before, is the connectivity index score. And basically, what that score is, does, is it shows a good connection within the development. Things that can lower the score, if you see dead-end streets or cul-de-sacs, that'll lower your score. If your roads connect outside of themselves, to other properties, which this one is doing, that will raise the score. And just having a better flow within the developments will raise that score. The property contains no wetlands. The only drainage feature is that Baxter Lane ditch that's out on Baxter Lane on the street itself. There are some gradual slopes to the property, but topography should not be an issue for street design. It's staff's opinion that the connectivity score, the connectivity index score cannot be reduced because the developer has not demonstrated that it's not possible to meet the minimum score due to topographic conditions, natural features, existing road configurations or adjacent existing development patterns. Basically, with an undeveloped lot, you can design a subdivision in a way that the connectivity score can be achieved, is staff's opinion. And this may be another indication that perhaps the P D R is not the appropriate zoning district for this property. The T R C is recommending denial of this request. And I'm going to read that to you. The P D R zoning request is inconsistent with the 2006 Land Use Plan because the P D R request is incompatible with the surrounding communities as outlined in our conversation tonight. And a P D R rezoning is not reasonable and not in the public interest because of compatibility concerns and non-compliance with standards of the U D O. Now separately, alternatively, staff would support a new application for a conditional single-family mainland request, but cannot support the P D R request. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Glave at this time? Is there anyone present to represent the case tonight? And I have a list. So I'm going to start with Mark Bissel, unless you want to wait till later. You want to go first or now, or last, or what? Come on up.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So I'm an engineer and I represent the developer. And Jamie Schwadler is also here. She's a land use attorney who is also representing the developer. And I'll start and then she'll address some of the other issues. Let me make sure I can go ahead and drive this thing. As Ms. Glave said, the summary of our request involves about a 53 and 1/2 acre tract. The rezonate from agricultural to planned development residential. And it's primarily single-family, although it has some duplexes as well with a sketch plan density of 2.37. This is the land use plan that's been proposed with the onsite wastewater system. There are a number of stormwater ponds shown here. The, you can see that, does this work? Do I need to come to the other side?
You'd have to stand on this side, I believe.
No, you actually pointed at the computer, Tammy's computer.
Oh, he's trying to use the laser.
He's trying to use the laser.
Oh, oh, sorry, sorry.
There you go.
So this is Baxter Lane. Can everybody see it?
No, you're good.
We're showing these two big stormwater ponds here adjacent to Baxter. And we're showing two potential stormwater ponds here in the middle. We haven't run a stormwater model yet, so we don't know for sure if those are going to be required. If they're not, these would be park areas without ponds, but they need to be ponds as well. Stormwater, of course, is a higher priority than park land. We heard a concern about these dead ends and whether they should be cul-de-sacs. They're short street stubs for a number of reasons. One is they only serve two lots each, and a cul-de-sac would typically serve four lots. Secondly, they would add about 8,000 square feet of asphalt per cul-de-sac that would run up the development cost and provides more stormwater that we've got to deal with. And they don't really serve a useful purpose. Thirdly, the, most importantly, the fire department doesn't object to them. The fire department has a 150-foot distance that they're allowed to pull up and back. These are considerably less than that, typically about 90 feet. The builders prefer more rectangular lots to the cul-de-sac lots. It's easier to get a house, you know, a nice house to fit on the lot without having to set it back farther from the street in order to get the width and losing your backyard. And we've done this identical thing at Waterside Villages over in Grandy. And there were really no objections there. There are a few of those kinds of identical stubs that serve one or two lots just like this, and it works really well. Staff had made a request that we consider moving the main entrance and making the main entrance the westernmost entrance, which is directly across from the main entrance to Windswept Pines subdivision. Is this entrance, that's the Windswept Pines subdivision or that entrance? And we're ruling to do that. We think that's a good idea. We'll put the subdivision signage down there so that becomes the main way in and out of the subdivision. As Ms. Glave indicated, the proposed conditions are that we're limiting it to 127 units, of which 24 would be duplex. And those are actually 12 duplex lots with a total of 24 units. Minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet, which is the identical lot size that we have in the adjacent Hidden Oaks subdivision to the south. We would, the Baxter Lane ditch is in difficult shape, and I'll go over that a little bit more later. But we would improve that ditch. We would adhere to sample architectural renderings. We'll do onsite wastewater collection in a wastewater facility onsite. But we want the ability to connect to an offsite wastewater facility if that becomes available. We will model the stormwater system. And in addition to these ponds, we'll put in property line berms that will contain and manage the 100-year storm event to protect the neighboring properties. We actually believe that this project is compatible with the surrounding area. As I said, the lots are similar and actually identical to the Hidden Oaks lots to the south. They're somewhat smaller than the Windswept Pines lots to the north and the countryside estates to the west, but these are also closer to the village. countryside estates to the west, but these are also closer to the village center. They're also directly across 168 from the main part of the proposed Currituck Station, which is the area you see in blue across the street, where density is actually being proposed there in excess of three times what we're proposing in terms of dealing units per acre, four to eight units per acre. We are screened by the railroad and commercial property in the front from 168, and think we'll actually have a, a lower impact. And here you can see the North Point subdivision in the northeast, northwest corner, which has, it's a little hard to read, I'm sorry, about 135 units. The Windswept Pines subdivision due north has 73 units. Due south, we have Hidden Oaks that has, that has the similar density of 1.8 units per acre, not that incompatible with 2.37. And then across the way, then just below that, you've got Shingle Landing Villas that are over four units per acre. That is the, here, and across the highway, is that the approved master plan for Currituck Station calls for between four and eight units per acre, all along that area. Where you see that mixed use farther south, that's two to four units per acre. The issue came up of connectivity. And this plan actually has been refined from the one we submitted at the pre-application We maximize the practicable connectivity by, we eliminated what originally was a dead end street. Originally, it was a dead end street here that we made that third connection to Baxter. There was a dead end street here that we looped to this road to improve that connectivity We are limited on three sides to what we can do. We've connected to the one existing roadway that we can connect to, which was actually summed up for that purpose, to the south here to Hidden Oaks. We have open space here associated with Baxter Lane Estates. We have open space here associated with Hidden Oaks, and then we have a railroad to the west. So, the only offsite connection we can make is to Baxter Lane, and we've done that three times. So, so this actually shows the connectivity index map that we submitted with the proposal. And this shows that our connectivity is 1.45. So, we, and staff, as staff indicated, the UDO calls for 1.6 for a PDR-type development. So, we looked at, well, is it practicable to do that? If we eliminated those three street stubs, along with whatever lots go with those, it would have only a marginal, give us only a marginal improvement to that connectivity index from 1.45 to 1.5. The only way you can achieve significant improvements to connectivity is by increasing your offsite connections, like we show here. A connection to the west where the railroad is, keeping the street stubs automatically raises it to 1.6, but it doesn't really, it's not really practicable to do that. Same thing would be true if we connected to the Baxter Lane Estates subdivision to the east, or an additional connection to Hidden Oaks to the south, but those connections are not available. The only, we could put a fourth connection to Baxter Lane Estates, but that doesn't really serve any useful purpose. So, we believe we have actually satisfied the UDO condition, which states, "The minimum connectivity index score may be reduced if the owner developer demonstrates it is not possible to achieve due to topographic conditions, natural features, existing road configurations," which, which includes a railroad, "or adjacent existing development patterns," which we have on the other two sides. "In those instances, internal street design shall achieve as high a connectivity index score as is reasonably practicable." So, the, the standard is not, is it possible? The standard is, is it reasonably practicable, practical? And we believe we have met that standard with our 1.45. We were proposing, as I said, drainage improvements to Baxter, the Baxter Lane ditch. The Baxter Lane ditch is a key drainage outlet. It drains major areas of Moyauk to the north and west. And it's in poor condition, and it's not even in the state right-of-way. So, DOT, there's actually no one other than the farmer who maintains the ditch. You know, it's, it drains DOT roadways, but it's not a DOT ditch. So, this would give us an opportunity to widen that ditch, to lay it back, to put it on positive grade, three-to-one side slopes, and then we would hold our water back onsite and then slowly release it into that ditch. We would form an association that would have ongoing responsibility to maintain that ditch and to keep it in good working order in perpetuity. As I stated, we have a mix of single-family and duplex lots. And you know, the duplex lot is a type of housing that's really not currently available, to my knowledge, in Moyauk. I just wanted to show you some of the housing types that are, that we would be adhering to, the kind of architecture you'll see. They're nice-looking homes, and, and they're, they're attractive, they're similar to the neighboring communities. And this is the, the duplex model that we're talking about. Because you can see, it pretty much looks like a single-family house, other than it has a doorway on either side. So, it's going to be an attractive housing option that doesn't currently exist. And with that, I'm going to ask Ms. Freud whether...
All right. You were next on the list.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I'm Jamie Schwadler at 301 Fayetteville Street in Raleigh. I'm with Parker Poe, and I'm a land use attorney. And I'm here just to address some of the consistency statements with the UDO, as well as the 2006 land use plan and the Moyauk small area plan. Ms. Glave did a great job of describing what those plans entail, but I'm just going to break down exactly what they, what they suggest and require, and then give a broader overview of what land use law principles suggest that you take into consideration when making your determination of whether we're consistent with these plans and whether our request is reasonable and in the public interest. There's three pertinent areas of regulations in Currituck County that you look to when determining whether the plans are consistent, and whether the density that we've requested is within reason. And I'll start first with the UDO. So, Section 3.7.2B limits the maximum densities in full-service and limited-service areas. Our designation is rural in the, in the UDO, but the UDO is silent. It doesn't have a maximum density for the rural designation. And under general land use law principles, if a use is not prohibited or expressly prohibited in, in the UDO, then it is allowed. And because there aren't density restrictions on the rural classification in, in Section UDO 3.7.2, which applies to the PDR that we're requesting here, that density is allowed. And our density is, is roughly 2.37 units per acre. The KAMA 2006 land use plan has a separate future land use map that designates the site in the rural area with a maximum of one unit per three acres. But consistency with this 2006 land use plan is not necessarily required in all situations. And one of those situations is where you're outside an area of environmental concern, and that's where we are here. Generally speaking, the 2006 land use plan is the KAMA-adopted plan and looks to those areas that KAMA is concerned about, those areas of environmental concern, and has some regulations on that. Those, those are still in flux a bit in our state law, but don't necessarily apply to this parcel. But in any event, the Moyauk subarea of the 2006 plan recognizes that a higher density is allowed here. And it basically says that a density of two to four units per acre is allowed, excuse me, three to four units per acre is allowed where there's central sewer, which we will have. So, we submit that it actually is consistent with that 2006 land use plan, but to the extent you find it's not, as Ms. LaCicero explained, you can make a motion to amend the plan to make it consistent, make the land use plan consistent with our request and our density. And finally, the most important plan that we think applies here is the Moyauk small area plan, which designates this area as full service with a maximum of three units per acre. Now, this plan was adopted later than the KAMA 2006 plan, and it recognized that the growth in Moyauk should be encouraged in areas that are designated full service, that would have facilities. And our proposal proposes both a central sewer and a wastewater facility. And so, we'd be able to provide those facilities, with the exception that Ms. Glave noted, that if an offsite wastewater facility was available, we'd be able to connect to that at some point in the future. So, we've basically been able to show that we're able to accommodate those, that growth and those utilities that was forecasted in the Moyauk small area plan. And just as a broad nature, those plans are supposed to be considered together. You're supposed to kind of weigh them and look at those principles and determine whether the density is appropriate in this area, and we submit that it is. It's close and almost adjacent to another full-service area on the 2006 land use plan, and is one of those infill sites where density is appropriate along a major highway and tucked in next to lots that are of similar size and character. So, not only is it consistent with the land use plans when, when looked in as a whole, but it's also compatible with lot sizes of the adjacent area, the Hidden Oaks example that Mr. Bissell noted. And it's also reasonable and in the public interest. This is one of those situations where if you're going to have density and going to have development come to Moyauk, you want to put it in an area that's close to services, that will support itself, and will have a concentration kind of tucked in where, where it's appropriately buffered. It's also consistent with the UDO, and that Mr. Bissell noted, that we're applying a connectivity where we can. And where we're not able to, we've recognized that in terms of the connections to the offsite railroad and the adjacent open areas. We simply can't pierce through those, and so we've maximized the connectivity within the site to the extent we can. And in addition, Ms. Glave summarized those terms and conditions. I won't go into detail on those, but they are in your agenda packet. And based on those terms and conditions, which make significant improvements to stormwater drainage issues onsite, make commitments to architectural compatibility, make commitments to the master plan, which shows buffering, we're showing how we're putting density in the right location, consistent with the land use plan, and in a way that respects the neighbors and makes this an appropriate place for the PDR designation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Does anyone have any questions? For Ms. Schwadler? Not right at the moment.
Mr. Chairman, can I just make one comment?
Yes, sir.
Regarding compatibility, I want to go back to the plan here. And I just want to point out that... We are providing buffers, vegetated buffers, to the existing development. Vegetated buffers here to Hidden Oaks, vegetative buffer here to Baxter Lane Estates. And we're also backing up the existing open space, range is from 50 to 100 more feet in width. And that was something that the people who came to the community meeting were really interested in. They were happy to see that we're putting a buffer up next to their buffer, and, and really, that was one of the, the key comments we heard. We didn't have any objections at the community meeting to, to the project.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to clarify something that Mr. Bissell said earlier. He was talking about Currituck Station was going to be at four to eight units per acre. And I think that's a little bit, a little bit out of context. The resident, the master plan for Currituck Station does call for 3,000 residential units, 1,500 single-family detached, and 1,500 some type of multifamily. That's over 3,000 acres. So, if you average out, that's for the entire Currituck Station master plan. So, I think pulling out four to eight units per acre, although there may be certain areas within that that are that, that density, because we do have an overall 1,000 acres of open space that's, that's set aside. So, I think that's a little bit out of context, saying that all of Currituck Station is going to be four to eight units per acre.
So, your, your overall density's a one-to-one, but you're going to be heavily developed up closer to the road.
There'll be, there'll be those densities within that.
Yeah. I was pointing specifically at the areas that are across the street from us and up near the highway, based on the, the adopted master plan.
We got you. I think. Okay? But again, it's an overall one-to-one, give or take, and then heavier commercial multifamily stuff is expected to be out closer to the road, across the road from Baxter Lane.
Correct.
Give and take. Thank you. Okay? All right. Moving down the list, I've got Mark Clark.
That's an answer to previous. Thank you, though.
All right. Yes, sir. Steven, sorry about the last name. Steven.
My name is Steven Kessler. I reside at 340 Green, Greenview Road in Moyauk.
Hold on.
Mr. Chairman, can I clarify something first?
Yes.
We have 20 minutes for opposition, so it's as a whole. So, they can't, each person can't speak 20 minutes. It has to be...
Sure.
Just letting you know.
If you could limit it to say maybe five minutes?
That's fine, yeah. My name is Steven Kessler. I reside at 340 Greenview Road, Moyauk, 27958. And, you know, the, the plans are beautiful. They're, I think it's a nice-looking neighborhood. It's, you know, well-thought-out. I think that's, you know, they've done a great job. That's, that's what they're hired to do, or that's what they're proposing. They've, they've laid out their plans very well. I'm here tonight on behalf of myself and anyone else who may be a Moyauk resident. I'm pretty sure we have quite a few in the room here, to say that I agree with what you had stated in the, or you had noted in the first part of this presentation that you gave, was the, the adequate public facilities, or whatever. Let me get my phone, one sec. So, my issue I have is that, in, in, sorry, referring to that adequate public facilities, that this proposal is not consistent with policy PP2. All right? I've read the land use plan, looked through it for all information about schools. I'm here tonight because of last night's Board of Education meeting, where we had several hundred families show up. So, when we say there's an emergency meeting, it wasn't just a couple of people showing up, it was hundreds of people filling up the gym in Moyauk. It was a pretty impressive turnout. A lot of people said they didn't expect to see that. So, of course, PP2, I'm going to read it here for the record, is, "Currituck County shall continue to implement a policy of adequate public facilities sufficient to support associated growth and development. Such facilities may include, but not be limited to, water supply, school capacity, park and open spaces, firefighting capability, and law enforcement." So, again, bottom line, not consistent with policy PP2. I would recommend a moratorium to the board, recommend that the Board of Commissioners come up with some kind of moratorium, put a, put a hold on this stuff. You know, take a number step aside, because we've got to increase our school system, our law enforcement. We just can't keep building. Okay? I, I can move here in 2016. Windswept Pines, Hidden Oaks, Lakeview, which is outside of where I live in Eagle Creek, North Point, this Baxter Station. Next week, we're going to talk about Flora, 480-something homes. When is it going to stop? And so, if we can't express our concern and voice our opinion, and all we do is just approve and approve and approve, we already know Moyauk is at, Moyauk Elementary is at capacity. You stated it tonight, 100%. Looking at the numbers that you, you rambled off about... Looking at the numbers that you rambled off about the certificates of occupancy, 2016, I totaled the numbers, there was a total of 1,271 certificates issued in the last 44 months. Okay? If we take out 30% for the beach and just look at 70% on the mainland, that's a total of 889 certificates. The average, that's 20 certificates per month, 20 homes occupied per month. If you divide that by half, that's, could be potentially 10 students per month, times 400, times 44, 440 on the mainland. Okay? And we have three schools. We keep developing only in Moyac. Why? Because of the full service, because of the attraction. But with what regard to the public facilities, the school system, we've got to put a stop to it. If we don't say that, then where's it going to go from there? You know, I think when developers come in here and give you plans such as these, they're beautiful plans, they're great things, it feels like when you go over things like sewer and wastewater and all these other, this is what you have to look at, and nothing's mentioned about the schools or the social impact to the area, it's kind of like you're picking out the furniture before you move into the house. You need to do this, and you do this, and you do this, like you've already approved it, because those are the things you've got to do, but there's a social impact. And to say, oh, it looks different on paper, we don't care, there's, maybe you do care, I don't know, but last night was a pretty clear indication that these home, this home building, all these plans, it's got to stop. We've got to put a moratorium on it, and we've got to get somewhere else than just approving homes and all these things. Is there a time to completion for this property? Do we know when this will be completed? It'll be three years? How long are we talking here? Three years, like Lakeview, probably. It's going to be another three years. Flora, the next one for next week, that might be four years, that's 480-something homes. We can't sustain this. You know, I'm not opposed to growth. I know there's people in Moyac who say, you know, stop growing, we've got to stay rural, this is not fair. I'm not opposed to growth. I'm opposed to growth without sustainability. Okay? We have to, and I'm not even asking for a new school. I'm asking, we could build a new building on the same property as a school. I don't know. I'm not an engineer. I don't know how it's going to get done, but it's got to be addressed. I'll leave it at that, because I know we have other people wanting to speak, so thank you.
All right. Yes, sir. Thank you. All right. Next, we have Everett.
There you go. Thank you.
Good evening. How you doing? My name is Everett Pettit. I live at 118 North Lou Sawyer Road, Moyac, North Carolina, 27958. So as, what was your name again?
Steven.
As you were saying, yes. So basically, we had a school board committee, as she was saying, I can't remember your name, last night. So we went up and we addressed the subject or the concern that, you know, you guys are developing at a rapid, very rapid pace. And, you know, I've spent my last 12 years in Navy. I moved out here probably five years ago, and I wanted to get out of the hustle and bustle of the Virginia Beach, Chesapeake, Norfolk area, kind of moved out to a more rural, you know, area. I lived, I grew up in North, or in Illinois. So, yeah, it's very rural out there. There's not a whole lot of, you know, city life, whatever. So, yeah, we moved out here. We wanted to get our kids into a good educational system, and that was primarily the one reason why we moved out here. And now we've come to a predicament, I guess, if you want to say. And not saying that I'm not going to be here for, you know, years to come, because I guarantee I'll probably move, you know, four or five years down the road out of this area. But there's still a, and a bunch of military folk that are moving across the border that are, that are moving into these houses. I would get, I would probably say a good 35 to 50% of the, of the, of the townspeople that are moving are military, and they're going to have children. And we're already at max capacity with all of the schools around here, and there's not a, there's not a plan in place for a new, a new school system. And now you're, you guys are wanting to go ahead and approve all these developments, you know, over time. And, yeah, they're coming up here and they're talking about, like he said, they're coming up here and they're talking to you guys about, oh, well, you know, we can, we can go ahead and we could subside because of, we've got this or we've got that. But what's getting pushed to the wayside is the community in general and the individuals that have to move in, that have families, that are going to need to, you know, take their kids and put them in educational systems that you guys can't support. So, yeah, there's, there's pretty much a huge concern for that. And we're, you know, I'm surprised that we're actually the only individuals that are here, you know, because of last night's meeting that we had. There was probably, I would say, at least 200 individuals that were up there that were voicing their companion, or their opinions about this situation. And like he said, it's just got to stop. I mean, when, when is it going to stop? You know? And on top of that, you guys, you don't even have, you're already at max capacity right now, and there's a concern for rezoning schools for children, pushing them down the road, making it just that much less of a situation up there, but you're, you're going to end up making it more of a situation down the road for Shawboro or for Central. And they're already, already close to max capacity as it is right now. So what's going to happen when they get to max capacity? Then what are you going to do? Then you have literally another, like he said, they don't even have a plan in place for a school as of right now. They are starting to look at potential areas to where they can build, which I think is completely ridiculous. Like I said, I think there needs to be some sort of, you know, stop to the ongoing development of this. On top of that, you have the infrastructure of Moyac. What do you, what do you got? You got Food Lion, you got Dollar General, what do you get? Build some more Dollar Generals? You going to build another Food Lion? You know, people got to travel to Elizabeth City, you know, 30 minutes away, or they got to go up to Eidenberg to go to Walmart. You know, that's another 30 minutes away. So, yeah, on top of that, you know, you got firefighting, or firefighters, you got, you know, your police. Where's all that coming from? So we're just trying to figure out, you know, what everybody's, you know, where everybody's situational awareness is on this. And that's kind of what we want to go ahead and bring up to y'all. That's all I got. Appreciate it. Thanks a lot.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Sam Miller was signed up to speak and looks like he's not here. Any, that's all I have, signed up to speak. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this? Come on up and state your name and address for the record, please.
I am Eric Gill. I live at 100.
Keep it to about five minutes.
I live at 100 North Lou Sawyer Road. As they were saying, just last night was a big eye-opener. We went to that emergency meeting for the school at Moyac Elementary, and I don't know how familiar you all are with that meeting, but it almost turned into a riot. That's how upset people are in the community. I'm sure you guys are elected officials, correct?
We are not. And I, you know, we're a planning board, we're an advisory board to the commissioners, meaning for planning purposes of subdivisions and rezonings, things such as the school system, the commissioners really do handle theirself and that we don't have much to do with. But we're here to listen.
Yeah. So I just, you know, same thing. My daughter, she goes to Shawboro. There was 23 kids in her class last year already in kindergarten. You know, how good of an education are you getting at that? That's the max capacity you could have for that classroom, like by state regulations. I just would think that as a community on a whole, we would want to kind of tread lightly on a situation like that and provide our kids with the best education we can. And if we continue to develop and continue to allow homes to be built and these people coming in, not saying I don't want that, but I feel like we need to be more prepared for it. And that's really all I have to say, I guess, so thanks for your time.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And I think kind of, just to clarify too, and maybe staff can help me on this, but I think kind of what has caught the county off guard in our school situation in Moyac is, if I'm not mistaken, there was some guidelines that changed, the way you figure the numbers in the middle here, that kind of caught us off guard where, where
There you go.
Put us behind the wheel a little bit with the school.
There's a couple of different things going on, I think. There are, in 2021, there will be new state general statutes, state regulation that will come into effect for the K through three class size, where you are, they've got a maximum capacity, and it's essentially from 17, and I don't have all that information right in front of me, because I was pulled into another conversation right before our work session. But it ranges anywhere from 17 to 20 for those, for those K through three classes, and that's the maximum number you can have. They, we're looking at an average class size prior to this new legislation that comes into effect. They're looking at average class size as far as, over the entire school system, and we were able to meet that criteria. But with this new legislation that becomes effective in 2021, we have that concern. Moyac, the Moyac Elementary School is at capacity for how the school, for the current Let's see. The current capacity for Moyac Elementary School is 583. For the numbers that we have gotten from the school system for that 2021 capacity for those, those new classroom standards, drops from 583 to 529. So, you know, this is, and we have been monitoring this. I don't want you all or in the audience or anyone here, we've been monitoring this, and we know, we knew within the next four to five years, we were going to have to build a new school. With those COs that we were talking about, we have, and I'm going to get some information to you all, the rate at which the houses are coming online are so much quicker than what we've historically seen. We have a very hot housing market right now. We have, you know, have military families that have found this, this area, and we're very attractive for our quality of life issues. And we're not, you know, we're 30 minutes from the shipyard and the port and some different things that make this a very attractive place to live. And just because of that, and the rate at which we're seeing houses being built and coming online, the January ADM, sorry, I'm so far into this, I'm throwing out acronyms, average daily membership, the 2000, for January 2019 was 541 for Moyac Elementary School. So over the, since, since January of this year to August, to last Friday, the numbers we got, we've seen 42 new students coming to the Moyac Elementary School district. But at the same time, we have seen, we do have some capacity at Shawboro, which is why as staff, we had always considered, the Northern Mainland Elementary Schools, if we get over capacity at one, we make a shift lines and buy us some time to get that, to build a school, to find a site and do those things. So I think, I think it's just the rate at which these houses are coming online. Let me go back. For Moyac, just for indication, 2015, we had 55 COs, certificate of occupancy issued for homes in Moyac in 2015. 2016, for the Moyac Township, Mainland, 65 issued in 2016, 2017. And you were coming out of the recession, so it was kind of slow. And then 2017, we're at 105 for, for the Moyac Township, 126 for the Crawford Township, which serves, which Shawboro Elementary and Central serve the Crawford Township. So we're going 55, 65, 109 in 2017. And then 2018, we're at 165 for the Moyac, for the Moyac Township, and 98 for the Crawford Township. So, you know, we're going, we're more than doubling the number of homes that are coming online. And as long as the housing market stays hot, I think we're going to continue to see this trend. And we're just having subdivisions that are built out so much quicker than what we have traditionally seen. So that's kind of my take on it. And, and we've known, we've, you know, we talk about the adequate public facilities in schools with the commissioners every year at the retreat, and we've been saying, we're getting close, we're getting close. And in the last two years, like, we're seeing an uptick that is very, that we, that we need to pay attention to. So, so here we are, and we've, we've kind of hit that with Moyac Elementary being at capacity and finding out last night that there is no desire to redistrict at this time.
Thank you. I don't know if that helped, but there was nobody else to speak, so I guess that closes the public hearing. And if anyone else has any questions amongst ourselves or for staff, or anyone, Carol?
I don't have any questions, but I do have concerns
Sure.
Of what the Moyac, let's say, people are talking about. And they're right. I mean, it needs to slow down with the housing. I don't know what we can do with what we're talking about here, but, I mean, I see their point.
Right. I don't know.
So I don't know if we can
How that really
Put something in a motion or something, or
We can truly send a suggestion to the commissioners that we deal with the school system and they need to take a look at that.
Yeah.
I think they're well aware of that.
I'm sure they are.
I will have to say that if I, you know, I'm, I'm aware with the 2006 land use plan, the future land use plan, the Moyac small area plan, and all of the many Currytuck presentations, Currytuck Station presentations we've had, that the general idea behind all of the plans, if you look at them, is to keep the, we are a strong demand in Moyac, and we have a very fast-growing community there with a lot of demand. And that's going to continue. And I think our plan on all of these comprehensive plans, if you take a broader look at it, it was to keep the development in Moyac proper and closer up to the Virginia line for your more heavily developed areas, infill vacant properties in those areas to discourage development out in rural areas like Shawboro and Jarvisburg, where we don't have any services that we can provide. I know that's, doesn't help the school system any, but seems like that's where the comprehensive plans have always pushed the development, and that's how we end up where we're at tonight. I think this actually fits the overall broad idea of all of those plans. It's infilling and keeping it on the northern end of the Moyac proper. That's all I really have.
The school being at capacity is certainly a concern. And we're not even, not even now, all the enrollment is completed yet, is it? I mean, that we know of?
Yeah. School won't start until August 26th is the first day of school.
Wrong.
So there's
We get another number about two weeks in, 10 days, two weeks, somewhere around there.
They've asked us to use their October number, their two-month number is what they call their October number, to take a look at that, so that everybody, typically, if you're going to be moving in and moving into the school system in the fall semester, in the fall, you're in by October. We also use a January number, so that we get anybody that may be moving in in January or, you know, if you're going to move, I know I have kids, I would, you know, I'd try to target your moving during the semester break, so that they can, so we'd have that number as well, which is the number I gave out earlier from where Moyac went from 400, 541 to 583 from, you know, January, that that January annual average daily membership to four, 583 of enrollment. So we, we have an October number, we have the number that Tammy was saying, you know, two weeks in, and then a January number as well that we, that we track.
Any other questions or discussion?
I'd just like to ask maybe if the staff could address the adequate facilities aspect of what takes place during the planning process and, and moving forward of projects. Just for some clarification for.
Okay. In the county's UDO, we have what we call our adequate public facilities ordinance. And, let me get it and I'll read it straight out of our UDO. No development authorized by a use permit, C-section 2.4.6, shall exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities, including but not limited to, schools, fire and rescue, law enforcement, and other county facilities. Applicable state standards and guidelines shall be followed for determining when public facilities are adequate. All required public facilities shall be in place or programmed to be in place within two years after the initial approval of this use permit. So, essentially, what you have before you is a rezoning, is a legislative decision. So it's, it, one of the next steps on this, if this is approved here at the rezoning and they get their PDR designation after probably some amendments and some working through different things, they would come back for a preliminary plat use permit. And when that use permit is approved, then the county should be, I just read it to you, all required public facilities shall be in place or programmed to be in place within two years after the initial approval of the use permit. So we would have to address the school, have the school issue addressed within two years of whenever they bring back their preliminary plat, use permit. So, the legislative decision, you have a little bit more discretion with denial or approval, whereas in a quasi-judicial decision, you have certain standards, much like you would in a court case, where you have certain standards, evidentiary, evidence has to be presented to, to make the case of whether that needs to be approved or denied. So that's a little bit more rigorous than, and than a legislative decision, like, such like a rezoning or a text amendment. So although you should consider the adequate, the impact on schools, a legislative decision isn't going to trigger, what we're saying, the adequate public facility standards where we have that, we're on that two-year issue. But it's definitely something to consider as you, as you deliberate on the decision, this legislative decision, because you do have more leeway with a legislative decision than you do a quasi-judicial decision. Did I, did I answer your question?
I think so. And I, I wanted to provide a little bit of clarification for the audience as well to, to see that there are things in place and that our, the planning board is not the final arbiter. And, and there are steps and mechanisms to go through that, that tonight's decision or what have you is not a, not the last step in the process, that there are other matters to, that, that have to go forward.
Correct.
In that regard.
You, you all.
And checks, the adequate facilities ordinance and, and commissioners and, and further meetings with the planning, with the staff and so forth. So there's.
It doesn't end with you all.
Does not end, does not, I just want it, that.
No, we, we're, we're crystal clear on that. Don't you understand?
Like the chairman stated earlier, this is an advisory board, they are an appointed board. They would make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners would, would then consider this and take staff recommendations, planning board recommendations, input from the public, and then they would make their own legislative decision. Once, if, if everything's approved and this plant, this zoning gets in place, then they would come back for the preliminary plat use permit that would then trigger this adequate public facilities ordinance.
I understand.
So.
Can I speak real quick?
Sure, just keep it brief.
I, I'll keep it quick. So, yeah, I completely understand that I got that, but you gotta think that we're, we're already at max capacity with, with, with that in general. And there's not already a plan in place. Like you said, it should have been, you know, two years and, and, you know, four years ago. But now we're already here. And I get it that there's, there's, you know, the situation is, is pretty dire. So it needs to be brought to the attention fairly quickly, especially if they're having a, a school board committee meeting for, for the education, you know, of students in this area.
And I think Ms. LaCicero tried to state that, you know, we grew faster than we thought we were going to.
That's what I was getting to.
There are a lot of people, you know, such as yourself and myself, that want to move to Currituck. It's a nice place to live and we wanna continue to provide that for other people as well. So we're caught in this limbo that we're, we'll, we'll have to deal with and the school being the main factor, it looks like, but.
It's also incompatible with the neigh, adjoining neighborhoods too. It's, it's a different size, they're different sized lots.
We're trying to catch up with the school system to the growth. That, that's gonna be hard in the future.
Well, like, you, you say you have that amendment in, in place, or the, like, you said that we have to provide adequate facilities, public facilities before you can approve something like that during that, the next step. Whoa, how do we get to the point where the school's over capacity now that, if that's in place?
Well, another way to word it, that's my question.
It's already there.
We're learning too, I think a lot.
You know what I mean?
My, my question, you said legislative action comes into place after, they have two years, what I'm hearing is after a property gets approved, they have two years essentially to look into the adequate, adequate public facilities and see and make that change or whatever, the two-year mark, is that, is that what I'm hearing? Legislative action in two years?
To this legislative, this is a legislative, the rezoning is a legislative action, which you have, they have a little bit more discretion with approving or denying it. So the next step, and it's gonna be on the applicant's schedule, if this, if this zoning gets put in place tonight, or not put in, sorry, it gets, it gets recommended approval and then put in place by the Board of Commissioners, then their, one of their next steps would be the preliminary plat use permit where they come in to actually subdivide the property, begin the subdivision procedure. That quasi-judicial, it's a use permit, so it's quasi-judicial decision, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm getting down in the weeds with there, but it's our ordinance and we have to. That's going to, that's when that adequate public facilities ordinance will, will be triggered at that point. So then we're gonna have to either have them in place when they come forward with the, with the preliminary plat use permit, or be programmed to come in place within the next two years. So, like I said, there's more discretion with the legislative decision to approve or deny. And for the next step, the preliminary plat use permit is gonna be a little bit more rigorous, it'd be an evidentiary hearing, and you would actually have findings of fact of whether they meet the standards for approval. And then that would trigger that adequate public facilities ordinance.
Okay. So, when swept pines, when did that start? Do you wanna know when that started?
What we have tonight is a hearing on a rezoning of the property, not the site plan approval. So what she's saying is when she, when they get to the site plan approval, then that's when the school system becomes part of the conversation.
My point is, properties are being developed all over across Moyac, including the one for Baxter Station here. They're, they're, they're planning, and things are actually getting built. We have, obviously, we can drive down the road and see all these new homes popping up. Some places you can't see off the main road, sometimes you have to drive back in there. Point is, we built all these things, as you said, to expect the growth, then for the ones that were early developed two years ago, let's say, nothing's been done to the school system. I mean, if they had a two-year mark and nothing's been done, why have we not seen change to the school system? Last night they go, oh, we're looking for property. I had found an article from last August, they said the same thing, we're looking for property. It's a scapegoat, they're keep saying, we're looking for property, that's fine, looking for property, but we keep developing and it keeps developing rapidly, okay? You already admitted that, I didn't know it was gonna be that fast. But if, if there's this two-year mark of, okay, now we need to see what's happening to the public facilities or what's, how do we evaluate that? All these other homes that went up two, three years ago, you know, they, they should now be looking at it and go, what's, what's the plan to increase this public facilities? Why aren't the schools being, you know?
What's changed is the school board has voted last night not to redistrict at all. So I think that.
To Shawboro, which is already at capacity, that makes no sense. I mean, I'm in Greenview, I mean, I'm in Eagle Creek, and that's the, that's a good majority of, of where they wanted to rezone and pull all of Eagle Creek out and put them in Shawboro, four hundred-plus homes, that doesn't make sense. Let's move a hundred and forty-something students to Shawboro because thirty-something were coming into the new school.
But was that a planning, like during planning, was that a thought process in some of the approval?
Yes, 'cause we, because we, we grouped those three elementary schools.
Right, okay.
Together, so, and.
Which doesn't make sense because this is only happening, development is only happening in Moyac, it's not happening in the, in these other towns because no one wants to develop there because Moyac isn't, they're not Moyac, they're not next to the border. I understand the appeal of this town, it's great, Currituck Station twenty years from now, that would look awesome, great, maybe there'll be a new school, I don't know. But right now, we have nothing in place and they keep getting built. So there's some.
You know, again, we don't control the school system here on this board, so.
But we can.
I would surely be sure to ask the commissioners that question when you get there.
Okay.
But we can't control the school system.
Right. But if we weren't here, we wouldn't have this discussion tonight, and that's why.
These trigger points like Ms. LaCicero is speaking of, those are the benchmarks that we know, when that happens, then we need to start looking for a school. And that's what they're doing now. Why they haven't done it before, I, I can't answer that.
Not before, three, four years ago, when this stuff started getting built up.
I would ask the commissioners that when you get there.
Yeah, I know Lakeview, all these other places had to have gone through the same process, the homes started getting built. Were those questions addressed? Did anyone like us show up and say, hey, hold on, we, we don't have the room for it?
I can't answer that.
You can't answer that, right, maybe you weren't on the board, I don't know.
We do have to move on tonight then.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Be heard very, very quickly.
Sure.
I, I just wanted to make sure we're, I think we're all on the same page, but, and I've addressed my comments to the board, but also to, to the public, 'cause we, we understand your feeling, we're, we're young parents, we understand how disruptive that can be. I think this board is in a kind of a narrow view of what their decision is tonight, which is the rezoning. And I think your passions are great, but they're, they're well-placed with the Board of Education and with the, with the county to seek, to seek new school, to seek new school sites. And I think one of the comments was, you know, there's so much growth, it's just gotta stop. But we've also heard how much the military families love being here, it's a great place to raise your family. And so I would, I would suggest one of the other fixes is instead of moratorium or stopping is that finding a new site that the county can acquire and have a plan in place, that adequate public facility ordinance is a trigger that is separate from the zoning decision that's here tonight, and that will be triggered only after a decision is made on that and a separate plan is approved. So it's not, I mean, two years would be the minimum, it's gonna be much longer than that because there's gonna be some time between when this, when this hopefully gets approved and when a new permit will be submitted back in. And I think if you can talk with staff, they've been doing all of that studies as each of these requests have come in and looking at that facilities and shifting children around. But it's, it's not an easy job for them to do. So I think the appropriate time to encourage that is with the Board of Education, and I respectfully ask that we kind of limit the, the view here to the legislative decision, which is the consistency with the statements that we made earlier. And then we'll be happy to continue this conversation with, with you all and, and help with the issue, 'cause I know it's important.
Absolutely, thank you. All right, well.
I have one, one more quick question. Just, it's real quick.
Yes, sir.
If the schools weren't a concern like you was talking about as far as what you guys are deciding today, why was that brought up there on the?
Well, the schools are always a concern, but this board doesn't control building schools.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to, I just wanted to ask.
For the appropriating the money they cost.
'Cause it just seemed like you was trying to.
Sure.
Make it seem like it doesn't really matter at this particular.
Well, it's not part of what we're hearing tonight. Because the rezoning of the property does not necessarily approve the development.
Yeah, I got what you're saying. I was just, I was just wondering.
So.
That is a factor that you could consider in your rezoning decision deliberation, you could consider the impact on schools. Like I said, you do have more discretion with the rezoning, with a legislative decision such as a rezoning than the Board of Commissioners would with a quasi-judicial decision.
So we could say, I could, we could go ahead with the rezoning, or we could put in there a clause, or we could, we recommend, we're approving a rezoning, put in a clause that the school district needs to have a location in place, start the site for school before anything's built?
That's gonna be hard.
Yes.
But I know what you're saying.
Reasons for doing is putting a Band-Aid. It is. It's not good.
It's also not an option.
The school system is gonna have to be addressed now.
Right.
You're looking at quite a while before any of these homes come online and they need to address the school system now to accommodate these, to be, that, that's where I'm at. We shouldn't be putting things on hold, they should fix the school system.
How long is it gonna take for them to go?
Well, that's what I'm thinking, if it takes three years to build a development, won't it take three to five years to build a school? 'Cause it takes longer when you go through the judicial processes and all that type of stuff that it does for developers, do the stuff independently and then just get approved. So if you're looking at, you're approving these, but then the school's gonna take three to five years longer, then you're still backlog-ing things. You have to take into consideration how long is it gonna take to find this site, to build this school, to construct this school, to go through all of these.
Staff the school.
The staff the school, to go through all of these things that you have to do to get a school. 'Cause it's not like building a house. You buy your own, you build your house, the school, you have to find your spot, you have to build a physical building, then you have to staff it. You have, there's a whole lot more regulations that go into commercial building than there does your homeowners building. So when you're looking at different timelines, so how are these two gonna relate to each other?
That needs to bring, be brought up to not us.
Those are all things that we need to suggest to the commissioners.
Yeah, I mean, ask, be brought up to the commissioners.
But again, moving along to keep things on pace and stick to what we have here as far as the rezoning is concerned. Is there any more discussion amongst the board members? All right, I will open the floor for a motion.
I would make a motion, we deny the request, as it, as it is inconsistent with the 2006 land use plan and the small area plan because of incompatibility with adjoining subdivisions, neighborhoods, and schools, and it is not reasonable or in the public's interest because of the same reasons.
And I second that.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Was there two in opposition?
Yes.
Yes.
So, motion passes. What is that, four to two?
Four to two.
And moving along, is there any announcements tonight? I think that's all of, all the agenda items, so is there any announcements?
That's it.
For anyone?
We will be holding the Dune Protection Ordinance Stakeholder Meeting tomorrow at ten o'clock at the Corolla Lib, is it ten o'clock at the Corolla Library? So much, so much has happened in the last few hours. So we will be doing that. We will be contacting you all to have a joint work session with the planning board and Board of Commissioners for the pattern book for Currituck Station. We met with our consultants last Friday, I think, no, Friday before last, that's We met with our consultants last Friday, I think, no, Friday before last, that's Thursday? Too many things going on, too many meetings. And we have a draft of it, but not a, not a full draft of the pattern book for Currituck Station and, and our regulations in place for that. But we would like to hold a work session with both the board, the planning board and the Board of Commissioners, hopefully in the early part of September. Once we have a full draft, we will be contacting you for your schedule to, to get that set up. Any other, Tammy, any other?
That's all I know of.
I, I think I'm, my brain's a little overloaded, so those are the, the two main announcements we have for you all tonight.
All right. Anybody else? All right. I don't have anything, so I'll open the floor for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
We have a second, all in favor?
Second.
Aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned.
I have a headache.